We'll be having a roll call. Commissioner Danny Bueller?
Here.
Commissioner Lorraine Day?
Here.
Commissioner Diana Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Ron Roots?
Here.
Commissioner Tim Robertson?
Commissioner Katie Speka?
Here.
Commissioner Kellyanne Terry? We're looking at the approval of minutes for April 7th and April 21st of this year. And then with corrections, some have been handed in. Does anyone else have any comments or corrections for the minutes?
I have just a quick comment on minutes, just looking. It looks like we haven't updated the minutes since March 3rd on the website. There's one set that's not on there. We're approving the second set for March tonight. Just the third one that is not in there.
So would tonight be April 7th and 21st? Is there a set from March that's?
Both March 3rd and March 17th are not on the website. Perfect. I will get if you two share those.
Thank you. We're good with the minutes for? Okay, great. Moving on to courtesies and proclamation. You have a historic preservation city?
Do you want to read it?
Sure, yeah. Okay, proclamation for National Historic Preservation Month 2025, City of Lewistown, Montana. Whereas historic preservation is a vital tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering pride in local history, and maintaining the unique character of Lewistown while enhancing its livability. And whereas Lewistown's rich heritage, from its early settlement and railroad history to its distinctive architecture, reflects the diverse stories and enduring spirit of central Montana. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities, both urban and rural, and for residents of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and honor the dedicated individuals who work to preserve the historic places that shape our identity as a community. And whereas the theme of the National Historic Preservation Month 2025, preserving history, building community, reminds us that protecting our past helps us build a stronger, more resilient future for Lewistown. And whereas May 2025 has been designated as National Historic Preservation Month by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, offering an opportunity to recognize and promote the preservation of Lewistown's historic resources, landmarks, and cultural heritage. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Lewistown does recognize May 2025 as Historic Preservation Month in Lewistown and call upon all residents to join in celebrating and supporting efforts to preserve our shared history for generations to come. I have to approve this fifth day of May 2025. Thank you. Thank you. It's pretty exciting. Okay, moving on to the board and commission reports. We'll start with Commissioner Hewitt. Airport Board meets Wednesday at 3 o'clock. Commissioner Roots?
The City County Health Board meeting was held April 28th at 5:30 PM. And it was very well attended. The Fergus County Health agenda was... The discussion items that they talked about primarily were the variance request for the CM Russell septic system replacement, and I'll get to that. Animal bites, and then following up on a piece of real estate, I think in Lewistown Heights, that is real close to a creek, and they want to get rid of a holding tank and put it in a drain field. And that's, they're going to be discussing that quite a bit, is what they're doing there. And then the family planning part of that meeting was... No, we're still into, okay. The immunization program was really big, is what they've done there. They have a lot of different vaccines for COVID, flu, and RSV. They had five vaccine clinics throughout Fergus County at different schools, businesses, and long-term care facilities. Total vaccinations given this quarter was 348. Public health, emergency preparedness. They've been going through different trainings and being, I think COVID kind of woke up the sleeping dog, and now people are preparing for something like that ever happens again, which is a good thing. They had 15 cases of COVID with one hospitalization. The influenza hospitalization was nine, and they actually had two deaths from the flu. So again, I compared that to October. And the influenza is more fatal than the COVID at this point. So make sure you prepare for that now, those flu shots. And then they talked about the Hep B and Hep C. Two and one on them, and so they've kind of taken care of that. And then there were four animal bites. And we had a presentation from a Lewistown police officer on what they're trying to do with that. I think a lot of that kind of goes into with what the City of Lewistown is doing with their vicious dogs and dogs at large, so that's a good thing. Yeah, the refuge system, let me find that packet. That was interesting. It's the area over on the, by the river. And when you get on that big hill heading down to the river, there's that area. And there's three houses there, and they've all been working. Their septic system is actually just a lagoon. And they order, the property wants to put in an actual septic system with a drain field. But the argument was whether you use a gravity flow or a pump. And I think that the natural terrain isn't conducive to gravity flow, although that is, the soil up there, if you've ever been up there and tried to drive in that stuff after a little, it is nasty stuff. And they put together quite a packet of information. And I'm going to try and find the district's senatorians. I had it out here. Okay, be patient. We'll find it. Sanitation report, okay. Basically, this, was this Ava that did this?
That was Barb on the phone.
Oh, Barb on the phone, okay. Anyway, they have a variance request discussion. And they have, okay, question. Will it contaminate any actual or potential drinking water supply? Comment. The applicant has not provided evidence that a prison system... And they were, the applicant has not provided evidence over and over and over and over and over. So Barb had no choice, I think, than to recommend not allowing the septic system. And so it did not pass at that meeting. So they're going to have to do a better job of preparing their case, so to speak, in my opinion.
And I thought it was very enlightening, too. So the appeals process to those variances is it goes to the EQ. And so they can still provide more information or argue it at a different level, too.
So that worked out pretty good. And then, again, I'm not understanding quite, you know, the issue with that little parcel of land. They live in Colorado, they want to come up here and retire on this land. It's not a very big lot, like a 40 by 150 is it? I don't see how there's even room for a septic system with the drain field that close to a creek, because you've got to be 100 feet from the creek. So I don't, I don't see, I don't see how that's going to work, so. Anyway, it was a very interesting meeting, one of the best ones I've been to, so.
Commissioner Roots, do you know how those dog bites get reported? Like, how does that get recorded, like?
Well, you know, people are not afraid to file a complaint on a dog bite. You know, a camper parked too long, man, but a dog bite, man, they get right after that. I mean, that's, because that's dangerous.
So they have to, if they go to the hospital, the hospital or hospital, or in law enforcement or things like that, if they get involved. Really, the only ones that don't typically get reported are, you know, if your own dog bites you and things like that. And they talked about citations. The sheriff was actually who presented. And so they talked about, you know, what codes they had in the county versus in the city a little bit. But it all goes through. Our health board, even in the other areas, so my older daughter was bit by a dog, so I have some first-hand knowledge on it. And it's a great process, you know, the health numbers calls. They make sure that they have their rabies vaccine, and then they follow up with the dog and make sure that they're not exhibiting any, you know, rabid symptoms. And then they check in with the person that was bit as well.
So I would be, like, assuming that letter that Commissioner Speke and I received regarding those dog bites, like, that would be a reported case? That would be something that, interesting. Thank you.
Well, and just another tidbit of information on that, then. A grandson got bit in camping trip, it was in Cascade County. They go to the hospital there to get stitches, and they're very thorough. They had to, the guy that owned the dog had contacted, and he was informed. He said, this is not a three-strike, it's a two-strike. Your dog bites somebody else, we're taking your dog. So they had it pretty well in place there, so.
Do you have that three-strike claim? Is that something that we did or no?
I don't know what their process is as far as, you know, how many. I think that's what the new dog ordinance will hold in. It's really the judge, and that's what the sheriff said, is it's the judge that implements the penalties. And so there's times that they have to move the dogs outside of the city limits, get rid of the dogs, things like that, that's not under.
Commissioner Bueller?
The library will meet May 20th at 1:30 in Milford.
Commissioner Speka?
Not going to report.
Awesome. And then all I have is, well, Park and Rec will need this Wednesday, 7:00 PM at the Civic Center. And just some feedback from the downtown association that they would like me to share is that they're waiting on feedback from the LUs for banners, trees, and parkland. Is that correct? And then, yeah, and just the destination. Lewistown was awarded a destination for the chain, for the training and the chamber. They didn't know what the name of the award was, but they wanted to make sure everyone knew.
It's on Facebook, it's worth nothing, I don't recall what it was.
Interesting. Yeah, so that was pretty much it. They're working on a lot of micro events to happen throughout spring and summer to bring more people into the downtown. All right, moving on to the city manager report, city manager Holly Phelps?
Yep. Just a reminder that the Historic Resource Commission, the words are Thursday night at the Mob Studio and start at 6:00 PM. And so just playing on start for the reservation month. Other than that, the municipal summits are going on again this year. There will not be any summits held in Lewistown, but there is a flyer that has a draft agenda and location. And so if you're interested in attending a training in one of those other communities, please let me hear, I know, and we can get you registered. They do have lots of great information, lots of legislative changes that affect the city. And so there'll be presentations on that as well. We have been working on lining up some training for commissioners. And so we would like to visit with you guys at some point. And I know we're missing a few members tonight, so maybe tonight's not the night to figure out what you guys would like to see, how you would like those trainings done. Is it at a committee in a whole? Do you want to schedule, you know, earlier in the evening? Or a separate day or something like that? So please start thinking about that and let us know kind of what works best. And we can discuss it more maybe at the next meeting as well. The Air Force is holding a town hall again. There's the flyer there that is coming right up. It's May 13th, 6:00 PM at the Trade Center. If you scan the QR code, you can submit your question or concern right there. And my guess is that they'll respond to it. But yeah, it's a great opportunity to hear what's been going on. This year, we're negotiating with the Fair Department on their bargaining agreement. And so I have met with their group. I'm optimistic that we'll have that done well in advance of the new fiscal year. And so I am planning on bringing it to you guys in the next month or so. Reminder, we have four commission seats up for election this year. The filing window is now open, and it doesn't close until June 16th. Again, Secretary of State's website or Janelle Tuchek at the Secretary of Porter's office can help with those filings. We briefly touched on it. The pool is well underway. We are getting lifeguards and staff trained and hired. Pool passes until Melissa's sign up will be made 21st and 22nd at the Civic Center. Also, all of that's available on the Park and Rec page as well as the pool page, so can be found there. We have started transitioning toward summer hours with the weather being as nice and limited access in the gym. So we have completely, will be closed on Sundays through the month of May and just open half-days on Saturday. And then after June, the weekends, we aren't open at all during the summer. Last week, or a little over a week now, Century paved that portion of the walking trail from the cemetery to E Street. It looks great. So huge thanks to the Friends of the Trails and Century for improving that section. That's really all I have.
Thank you. Yes? When you talked about the training opportunities for the commission, I was curious, like, I've not been able to finish the Robert rules that we all logged into. Is it revealed?
Have they started? What do you think?
Started.
Started, okay.
Good.
I know I'm behind the curve.
Yeah, you're right in the middle.
Behind the curve I was.
I copied off the cheat sheet.
When is the projected time the Civic Center 4 will be finished?
So they are, and they're well, well in the process. And they were taping lines and getting ready to start doing their lines and saving. So it's a few more weeks, probably the end of the month.
What was this for?
The Civic Center floor?
The floor.
Oh.
Brand new floor. And then with the trail are the, what are they called? Crossing?
The beacons?
Beacon.
The beacons?
Are those upon the agenda to be put in this summer? Yes, and so we've...
What are they called?
Bluffing beacon.
They're the bluffing beacon?
So we did get the state as part of their project on First Avenue to pour the basis. And so they were up Friday and did that. And so we've got a little time to let that cure out, but then our staff will put those up. And we'll begin working on the other two intersections. What are the, so there's the?
Junior high.
Junior high and Creekside. Creekside, and then the First Avenue. Yep, the First Avenue ones will be up.
On the state, we should.
Creekside.
The gray range.
Gray range?
The gray range.
Yeah. Perfect. So that, those are on the agenda for this summer. We just, I would mark them again. We'll probably wait till Junior High's out for those? Yep. But early summer. Okay.
Any other questions or comments for city manager regarding her report? We'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items.
Hello, public.
All right, the consent agenda. What questions do we have for the city regarding the consent agenda? I'll ask a question. So Nancy Sackett's flat, that's divided up the cross between city water and sewer?
The typical split amongst general funds, city...
So it's only from a general fund instead of?
The usual split.
That was the only thing that I was like, questioning. Not that I'm against that, but just that.
I'm curious. Unless we specify it, that the typical is to spread it amongst all of the firms?
That makes sense.
What is 56949 on page 5? Petty cash?
So we have a petty cash account or a petty cash box. And see what it gets used for is mostly mailings, ICE, postage, the Fair Department registered their new four-wheeler trailer, that sort of thing. And so we have a small amount of cash that is accounted for. On a monthly basis, they typically put the petty cash checks.
Any other questions or comments regarding that?
I've never seen, that I remember in the time I've been here, a requisition for ammunition for the police department, so. But, so that doesn't happen very often?
They have quite a large amount of it. So they do trainings and are required to shoot a certain amount. Because they don't do it a ton, but when they do purchase, they'll purchase a larger amount.
Yeah. Well, that makes sense.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the claims that have been paid from April 18th to April 30th, 2025, for a total of $159,300. Ooh, $394,557.
Second.
Are you sure?
We have a motion from Commissioner Bueller and a second from Commissioner Roots. Any other questions regarding the agenda? All in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one is discussion and action on reappointing Dana Gooden to serve an additional three-year term on the City of Lewistown Police Commissioner, City Manager Holly Phelps.
So the City of Lewistown has a police commission. Three members of the public appointed by you guys to hold a three-year term. Those individuals are Tyler Hyde, Dana Gooden, and Faith C.
Was Tyler's last name?
Marlo, no, Thomas, sorry. Marlo from the Health District, her husband's a brand inspector, only. And so they work with the police department to help conduct interviews. They bring a little different perspective to the interviews. Not so law enforcement-based, but really looking at how they'll fit into the community and offer kind of that perspective. And so it's a great thing. This is straight out of statute, kind of what can be done, their role. Again, they make a recommendation, they sit through the interview process and make a recommendation to the hiring board, and then that's forwarded on to me.
Is Dana excited to serve another three years?
She's very willing to do it. And so they work hard to not ask them to meet a whole bunch. They put together a hiring list. We do currently have, or will have, two positions open within the department. And so we've got an officer that's leaving us and joining the sheriff's department. And so we will have two positions, but they did put two people on the hiring list with this last one.
How often do they meet?
Only as needed.
Only as needed, as needed.
Depending on how many positions are open and stuff like that, I think it's probably three to four times a year.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move we reappoint Dana Gooden to serve an additional three-year term on the City of Lewistown Police Commission.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roots with a second from promotion from Commissioner Hewitt. Any other questions or comments from the commission or the public?
So these are volunteer physicians, these three people? Do they ever get at least a piece of supper? Nothing, no?
They usually do it in the middle of the day. But yeah, I mean, they could be compensated and...
Doesn't say they get $10?
They could. They don't, but they could.
They get $10 a day?
Every year we appoint one, right?
That's how it works.
Three years, staggered.
And it's the first meeting in May that it's supposed to be done. And this is, pretty much all of these guys are in the various phases of their first term. Long-serving with Commissioner.
Any other questions? We'll take a roll call vote. The Lewistown City Commission is voting on reappointing Dana Gooden to serve an additional three-year term on the City of Lewistown Police Commission. Commissioner Danny Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Lorraine Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Diana Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Ron Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Tim Robertson is absent. Commissioner Katie Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Kellyanne Terry is absent. Thank you. Item number two is discussion and action on approving a bid for the City Hall concrete project, City Manager Holly Phelps.
So included in your packet was the bid package. We had two slip-up projects, so this was some state grant funding that we had. The first one that we awarded in the fall was to do the emergency generator and battery backup at the police department. And the second part of that was to do the concrete in front of City Hall. And so what is proposed here is to replace the whole block of concrete. So starting at this far corner, the curb and gutter would be replaced. There'd be sidewalk all the way down, and then two accessible entrances to City Hall. So both to the Water Department and the Police and Fire side of things. And then the driveway at the Fair Department would also be replaced. And so this bid today, we have one bidder, and that was Century Construction. And their bid amount was $260,000, which was far less than the estimate, so.
So that is the sidewalk also in front of public works?
No. No, that has been recently replaced, that's already.
I move we approve a bid for the City Hall concrete project.
Okay.
We have a motion from Commissioner Roots and a second from Commissioner Speka. Any other questions and comments, no more motions out?
Does the slip-up funding cover the entire project?
No.
So is it a match?
It's a twenty-five percent match that we are utilizing our building maintenance funds to cover.
Okay, so we got a, we got a blank bid, and it went to, it went to Century paving?
Um, you, at the time the packets went out, the bid was not in, so the one bidder was Century Construction, and it was two hundred and sixty thousand.
Two sixty.
That was below estimate, and they were the only ones that could have been in.
And what does the twenty-five percent come from again?
The line maintenance.
Thank you.
So that, so that two sixty, if we were to multiply that by seventy-five percent, that would be the city's cost?
Of course, yeah. And so that is, the city got about four hundred and eighty thousand in slip-up funds allocated to it. About four hundred and eighty thousand?
Now, what's that number?
Was what the, the grant funds
Okay.
were, that were allocated.
But we didn't get the four hundred and eighty thousand?
We do have it.
Okay.
But we split it amongst two projects, so we have this one, and then the generator project was about a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Now, the reinforced driveway here, that's in front of the fire department?
Correct.
Is that part of this bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and then it also ties, so a lot of concern here, and you can see some settling and stuff like that, and some overall poor concrete conditions and stuff like that, but also our larger fire trucks drag on their way out, and so this project will be designed so that, you know, the slope on that driveway is adjusted, and so they'll be patching this more than just at the curb line to give threat.
Do they have an idea of how long the fire truck are gonna have to sit out in the open?
Uh, so they won't sit out in the open.
Really?
Basically, what
If they walk the back way?
Yep, they'll turn them around, and if, we need to, because there's certain equipments that is heavy enough that can't drive over the road, the grates, you know, the drainage grates in the floor, and then they also have exhaust venting in the bays up above, and so some of the equipments too tall to kind of kitty-corner, and so we'll utilize the space we have at the airport, but also maybe public works to make sure that it's not outside in the middle of a hailstorm in August or something like that.
Okay, any other questions regarding the bid for the City Hall concrete project from the commission or the public? Awesome, all right, we'll take a roll call vote. Lewis Town City, uh, Lewis Town City Commission is voting on approving a bid for the City Hall concrete project in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars by Century Construction. Commissioner Danny Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Lorraine Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Diana Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Von Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Tim Robertson is, Robertson is absent, Commissioner Katie Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly Ann Terry is absent. Thank you. All right, any citizen requests?
I'm here working on snow removal plan, can you work on a snow prevention plan?
Yeah. It's in the works. More and reading would be great, we're not asking much.
We're thinking umbrellas. Above blocks, blocks. One giant.
Any other requests that we could, okay, take care of. Awesome, all right, we will move on to Commissioner Minutes, we'll start with Commissioner Speka. I don't have any, did I, no? Commissioner Bueller?
No minutes.
I did all my minutes during the commission of the whole, so I'm good, too, I did want to say happy Cinco de Mayo and happy National Preser, what would do if we just read? Historic, yeah, that's so amazing, we have such a beautiful historic community, so. Commissioner Roots?
Nothing to, I'm good.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Well, I have a question on the Danish, we need the summons, we are having one here in Lewis Town?
No, every, every year, they'll come to Lewis Town.
Okay, and also, last year, Cinco de Mayo fell on the airport board, and I took everybody and dosackies. I was going to, but I don't think we can do that in here. I mean, and we didn't open, and they weren't open. Yeah, dosackies, eh? But I thought about it.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right, meaning adjourned.